Right, right.
It may be the case that's a memorable one.
Hello.
Who would look out for me if you were?
Thank you.
You ready?
I'm standing by.
I saw the sashay, I noticed.
Right, yeah. It's not, yeah. It's not a, it's not a business versus, right.
It's not business versus.
Right. Right. And it's hard to read the currents even on legislators.
Any rule from the front of the ball? Sorry to call, let you know this is going in your second.
Yeah, for sure.
Whatever.
Right.
But what concerns me is the sort of pressure. I mean, you're right next to him, Adele.
Yeah.
But doesn't look like a package to write.
Right. If you're writing stories, I just believe that's what it is. Right. 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 Yeah.
There's, there's poses. Sure, it's really like.
It's not a rematch.
Right. Right. Yeah. But I think hard to write.
Yeah, just have it a little quick then there's.
Let's help with that.
So maybe.
The no fun.
Well, that's true. Just because I'm a free speech, doesn't mean I'm writing something.
Thanks, Chris. You know what? You guys.
Right. Right.
A similar idea.
How are you?
Right. Well, it's. I mean, it's.
I'm glad.
I, I like.
The country got off you. I went to. But, but you had. It's not.
How you doing?
I can, good. I have some noodles and.
It's good. You've got all those, all those times. You've got 40 minutes every day.
It's, it's just gonna go to eat a course.
You tell me? Look, if you can satisfy eight, I'm a happy.
Try. No, it's the new main time because Jones and.
Don't take those.
And I thought that Chase was gonna stay.
No.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Where to pause?
I don't think she said. I think this is, this is. Thank you for shit.
It was, right. There's some.
So as I go my. What if I just use it? I said, who will issue this? No, no, but it's. Can't do that. I think the joint rule subsection or as. Double A. I think you have this, I think you have this. You have a letter from here. So you know, a couple of weeks. I got that.
Intimidating. Have you made it yet? I don't turn on it yet. Oh, what?
Not a no.
Tell them the lights are down.
Okay, good afternoon. This is the Utilities, Energy and Technology Committee. It's April 21st. And we're taking up broadband today. If you guys speak on a bill, please sign in and state your name. And due to timeframes and legislators are a big pain in the pot, we're gonna take things a little bit out of order here. Sorry, I just had to call it like it is. But before we do that, we're gonna start off and introduce ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Martin Gromen. I represent House District 12, which is part of Pittaford.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Babbage. I have the good fortune to represent District 8, which is most of Kennebunk.
I don't know if it's on, is it on?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. My name is Beth O'Connor. I represent House District 5, which is Berwick and part of North Berwick.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Garrett Mason. I represent Senate District 22, which covers parts of Andes Gog and the County of Beck County.
My name is Larry Hefler. I represent District 118, which has communities and unorganized townships in Somerset, Franklin and Viscati, Viscati.
Good afternoon. I'm Bobby Devers. I represent District 2, which includes all of Elliott, parts of South Berwick and Kittery.
Good afternoon. I'm Norm Higgins. I represent District 120, towns in southern Viscati, Viscati.
Hi, my name is Nathan Wantworth, and I represent District 70, which is the Freiburg area.
Hi, my name is Jennifer DeChant, and I have the honor and privilege of representing the City of Shippes, City of Dan.
And we have Decker Schneider, who is an analyst, and Ben Breck, who is a very able clerk. I'm Dave Woodson, Senator from the R County. Everyone will get three minutes, except for the sponsors. They'll get a little bit more than that. And we're gonna start off with Representative Cave on 1323, because he has to leave. But then we're gonna come back to that in a later time for testimony. And after he speaks, we're gonna take up 1063. So hope you can follow that. Representative Cave?
Thank you, Senator Woodson. I agree with your comments, and even worse than just legislators being a pain, imagine leadership and the pain that we cause, especially committees. So I appreciate your hearing this and recognizing that priorities and commitments bring us other places. But I am here to present LD 1323, An Act to Expand Rural Broadband. I am presenting this today as yet another tool in the toolbox to try to provide rural broadband around the state of Maine and come forward with this bill to bring an idea. And looking through the bill, there are probably areas of concern for many people in the committee. I thought back to the fact that I had never been before this committee until this session, and here I am, three times this session, bringing you complicated issues that are well above my head and sort of leaving these on your lap. I bring this forward as a, an option to really discuss the idea of allowing municipalities and others to play a role in providing broadband where it is appropriate. And I bring you today something that has some language, but is a little more than sort of a concept draft. And I encourage you in your work to move forward with anything that you feel necessary to expand broadband, whether it's this bill, but probably not, and pick one or two or three or four of the other broadband bills that are before you. Happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Representative Cave. Anybody have any questions for Representative? Okay, see you now. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And we will take up discussion a little bit later. We'll run it back to 1063, is it? And Representative Gideon. Okay, anybody see Representative Gideon? I haven't looked at the chair anywhere. We are used to being very drunk here, so.
Senator Woodson, would you please accept my apologies? Thank you for waiting. Senator Woodson, Representative Dianne is absent. Esteemed members of the Energy, Utilities and Technology Committee, you can tell how much I miss this committee by my continued presence here. Thank you for hearing this bill today, LD 1063, which is an act to promote community broadband planning and to strengthen economic opportunity through Maine. And that bill title is very purposeful because in our modern world, and especially in a state like Maine, which is rural and large and sparsely populated, we know that broadband buildout is absolutely essential for our economic future. We compete in a global economy, and in that global economy, goods and services and talent and capital can move across state lines and across international lines very freely. And because of that modern reality, making sure that we have high-speed broadband universally in this state becomes of the utmost importance. So to back up for a second, in very simple terms, let's talk about what broadband is. Broadband is a fast internet connection that is always turned on. And that means that any one of us at any time of the day or night can be connected to the global economy. We can grow jobs, we can increase educational opportunities, we can provide health care, we can communicate with customers, invite telecommuters to live here in our state, and encourage young people to return to our state. Right now in Maine, though, only 20% of households actually have access to what we define in our state as broadband. In fact, Maine is a national leader in our definition of broadband. We set a definition that recognizes the fact that upload speeds are as important as download speeds. Why does this matter? Because we can talk only about economic development when we start looking at broadband as a means to produce and export, not just as a means to consume. Do you want to watch a movie on Netflix? Great, high-speed download is very important for that. But upload speeds are what allow us to measure the rate at which a user can send information back to the internet. If you want to work remotely via the cloud, if you are an architect sending design files to an engineer, if you are a medical technician sending x-rays to a doctor in a neighboring city, upload speeds matter. These are the examples which help us understand why it's so vitally important this large rural state has true broadband infrastructure. So a little bit about the legislation in front of you today. It is legislation which tries to build a foundation for broadband buildout in the state of Maine. It zooms down to the very local level and asks all of us to sort of take a step back and think about how we can plan for what that broadband infrastructure needs to look like. It does this by reorienting the existing Connect Maine authority. Now, as background, Connect Maine has, first of all, I just want to congratulate and recognize that Connect Maine has done an extraordinary job with its mission to date. Its mission has been to go, help, help get to the last mile. And they are in their ninth round of grants to get to the last mile. But what we try to do here is to reorient Connect Maine so that they now give planning grants instead. A municipality can apply for a planning grant. A group of municipalities can come together to apply, even a group of like-minded people. So for example, the Farm Bureau, I know, has been in front of you before this session regarding broadband. They could come together as a group and apply for a planning grant. And the specifications that we put in this legislation are that with that planning grant, a couple of things have to happen, which Connect Maine helps this, whatever entity applies for the grant with. Number one, they have to look at what existing broadband structure there is. So what's already in the ground, for example? Number two, they have to look at where they want to be. What reasonably, you know, what does their town look like? What does their region look like? What, what are the possibilities for economic development? And then number three, they have to figure out how to close a gap between those two things and make a business plan and send out an RFP and execute. And the final piece that Connect Maine would help with is trying to gather different entities together to actually fund this. So it's really a Kickstarter, we hope, for private investment, but also for figuring out what federal money might be available, et cetera. And the idea behind this is that, you know, at the end of one year or two years, we can really look around the state and what planning has happened and understand where there is still need and understand where financially we haven't been able to close the gap to get to real broadband penetration. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, Representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I caught a word that I wasn't sure if you meant. You said instead of reorienting. In other words, they're not going to continue to do last mile work?
Correct. They, they would not specifically have that as their mission anymore. Their, their mission would now be grants for planning.
Representative Vice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Representative Gideon. You know, we have so many, we have a lot of broadband bills, so we have a lot of bills about Connect Maine. And I just wondered, do we really know enough of what their mission should be and what models are from other states and what they could be to just sort of say, let's do it this way? You know, I hate studies, but sometimes we need to know more. And I'm wondering if somehow this bill could encompass a little bit more informational gathering.
Well, thank you for the question, and I think that there's a lot of validity to the understanding portion of this. Ultimately, it will be your decision as a committee to decide if you need more information and what that information is. But I do want to point out that the reason why I think that this is a good bill as it is, is because it does involve the planning process. It asks us, instead of coming up with a large dollar sum and saying, we know we have a problem with broadband penetration in the state, but instead of coming up with a big bucket of money to just put out there, we're instead stepping back and asking a planning process to take place, community by community. Additionally, we do have some examples, and I think you're going to hear about them today, of communities in Maine that have gone through this planning process themselves. They've done ahead of what we're doing. So, we actually have a model for how this works.
Thank you.
You have your representative?
Thank you, Representative Gideon, for helping to push this forward. I always appreciate that, broadband. But the question I have is about the section that, on 10-2, on the assessment, which is currently, if I understand it correctly, we're at, was it 0.25?
Mm-hmm.
On essentially landlines that pay a fee and that wireless or prepaid wireless currently does not.
Correct.
And by lining out those two sentences, that would by, in effect, bring everybody on to the same rate? Am I correct?
That's correct. Right. So, we keep the rate the same, the .25, but we say that for wireless providers, this is no longer voluntary, that in fact, customers of wireless would pay into the Connect Maine fund as well. And the reason for that is that when originally this funding mechanism was set up 10 years ago, the way that wireless customers use broadband was very different. In fact, I mean, really, there wasn't mobile broadband the way there is now. And mobile broadband was not, by any stretch of the imagination, part of the solution that we might use in the state of Maine. But we have seen in places like Washington County that it has become part of the solution.
So, can I do a follow-up question?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you know, or can someone, someone here today, because I don't know the answer to this, so, how much money we generate currently on the landline assessment? And how much we generate if we add in the wireless?
Yes. So, I believe that right now, and I'm just gonna throw out also a lifeline to anyone who's coming behind me. If they have different information, I welcome it. But my understanding is right now we generate about $1.2 million annually. And I have actually two different figures, so I do hope that lifeline emerges, hint, hint, behind me, that adding wireless customers in could generate anywhere from $600,000 to over $1 million more. And on that note, I think we do need to definitely zero down on that number for the committee to be able to do their work on this. But I would also point out that the other thing I think the committee needs to determine through this process, if this vehicle is something that moves forward, is what is the right number that we need? Does the assessment of .25 stay the same? Does it move down based on what the total contribution would be and how many communities might be receiving grants per year?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Mason, do you have something else to say?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow members of the committee, as you all know, and for members of the public. My name is Garrett Mason. I am the state senator, present District 22, which covers most of Van der Skoggin and parts of Kennebec Counties. And I am coming to you today to talk to you in support of LD 1063. I won't belabor the point. Representative Gideon did a great job of explaining her bill. I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of it. And I just, I would ask you to read through my testimony. But a couple of things I just wanted to point out off the cuff, things that are important to me about this bill. Representative Gideon talked about the definition of broadband and how we're a nationwide leader in that definition. By using that definition going forward, we really can improve access to two different areas of our economy. The first is education. We are seeing more and more work being done in public school through the internet. Some of the things that we do in school require a lot of visual learning, long distances, teleteaching is what they call it. And by upgrading our broadband and making sure that we're able to expand our network as far as we possibly can and to make that network more powerful, we will be able to take advantage of more and more resources for our public schools. And I think that is very, very important. The second thing that I'd like to point out, Representative Gideon also mentioned this a little bit, too, is telemedicine. We, medical files are huge. And as we move to electronic medical records as required by the ACA, we're gonna need to send that information more quickly, and we're gonna have to send it to places all over the world. That, telemedicine is a huge thing that's going to be happening over the next decade. Right now, at Maine Medical Center, we use telemedicine to take advantage of all of the great experts at Massachusetts General Hospital. We, doctors down there are helping us here in Maine with people, in specialties that we just don't have the doctors for here in Maine. Those are two really great areas that I think that this bill can help address. I also wanted to address one more thing that is not in my remarks, and that is the fact that we really are, there's communities out there that are starting to do this already. Rockport, Borno, South Portland have all taken it upon themselves to start this planning process.